Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. God of our heritage, our daily agenda, and our future hopes. Take this humble city, this culturally rich city, this city dappled with both problems and potential, and make her grow into her own deeper purpose. May all who love Baltimore and dedicate themselves to her betterment find rootedness and blessing in shared goals. Bless Baltimore's entrepreneurs, her dependents, her saints, her unsung, her municipal workforce, her volunteer help force, her regulators, her commissions, her educators, all her many heroes, and all her huddled and hopeless. May those who do so aspire to continue their good work and inspire others to follow. May those in need of your faith never be lost to despair. And may we ever feel the awesome responsibility of caring for our blessed neighbors as thanksgiving for our many blessings. Now, upon these proceedings, grant wisdom and patience to the council members Sharon Matthews and her presentation, and all those gathered, especially those with a passion for discourse and a critical yen for justice. Banish all discrimination, retribution, and slander from these conversations. Replace them with validation, respect, and egalitarian courage. May this meeting be productive and blessed, ever thankful and aware of the people for which we convene. Amen.
Amen. Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, for all. The clerk will call the rolls of the members.
President Young, Craft, Scott, Kern, Henry, Specter, Mosby, Holton, Welch, Risinger, Cole, Stokes, Branch, and Clark. Mr. President, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Tonight's showcase Baltimore presenter is Sharon Matthews of the Wish List Depot, who will talk to us about the great work they're doing to help students succeed in school.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sharon Matthews, and I am the founder of the Wish List Depot. First, I would like to thank Council President Jack Young for inviting me to speak tonight, as well as the rest of the City Council for your gracious attention. For those of you who are not aware, the Wish List Depot has been operating in Baltimore City since 2012. We are a nonprofit organization that supports Baltimore City students with free school supplies. Research shows that students who come to school without school supplies have lower attendance rates and are more likely to do poorly in school and eventually drop out. We serve our students in need in five ways. Free store. The Wish List Depot has a teacher-free store located at Pimlico Elementary Middle School. At the free store, teachers shop for free school supplies and classroom supplies every month. Let me share with you some of our stats. In 2012-2013 school year, we had 95 teachers shop at our depot. Thirty-eight thousand items were distributed to the teachers. These teachers used these items to serve 1,832 students. In 2013-14 school year, we had 175 teachers shop at our free store. The items that were distributed to the teachers were 70,000 items. These items were used to support 3,457 students. We also support our students by a program we call "Wishes on Wheels." It's our mobile unit. We take the school supplies to the teachers who are unable to come to us. Our stats for 2013-14 school year, for four months was 80 teachers received school supplies. The items we distributed to those schools, those teachers, were 2,200. They service 1,840 students with those items. We also have a program called Homework Toolbox, my favorite. Kids entering to kindergarten were given homework toolboxes to do their homework. We all know that homework assignments are to enforce the skills learned in school, but kids in need, parents rarely have those supplies at home. So in 2012-2013 school year, 47% of the kids returned homework completely done. We then, in 2013-14 school year, gave two teachers, 60 kids received toolboxes. At the end of the school year, their data showed that 86% of the kids came to school with completed homework assignment. That was a 41% increase. In those school boxes, they received a pencil, eight crayons, one glue stick, one eraser, a pair of scissors, and pencil sharpener. Those toolboxes were supported each month by the Wish List Depot. So those kids were never without school supplies to do their homework. We also have a program called Ready, Set, Teach, and that's for new teachers entering to the school year in Baltimore City Title I schools. They are invited to shop with us for a whole year. We support their needs in their classrooms throughout the school year. We also have a program that we are looking forward to you helping us with this year. It's called Halftime Supply Drive. We all know that halfway through the school year, kids are out of school supplies. So what we would like to do is hold a school supply drive halfway through the school year so that their third and fourth quarter, they'll be equipped to be focused, motivated, and to reach the end zone. So that is our halftime school supply drive. We have a lot of work ahead of us. We have 139 Title I schools with over 50,000 students in need. We cannot do this alone. I ask you to consider this. Let's bring in our corporate partners here in Baltimore City, our corporate companies to help us with the Wish List Depot and making sure that students have supplies all year long. Back to school is great. Back to school book bags motivates them to get ready for a new year, but we all know that those supplies are consumable. They need supplies to keep them motivated throughout the school year. That's where the Wish List Depot comes in. Their teachers come to us and they take those school supplies back to their students. Why am I so passionate about the Wish List Depot? Well, as you know, not all Baltimore City students graduate and go to a four-year university and plant their feet somewhere else in another state and help build businesses in another state. A lot of us, a lot of us stay here. We're here. We're here in Baltimore, and so we need your support. We need the support of our community. I am one of those kids who walked the halls of Baltimore City Schools without the school supplies. I am one of those kids where the teachers gave me school supplies so that I could be prepared for school. So that's why I am so passionate, making sure that the students who are in need have the school supplies that they need to be successful in school. Thank you very much for giving me your attention. If you have anyone that you need me to call or visit, just find me on my website, wishlistdepot.org, give me a name and a number, and I'll take it from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. It is the Council's custom to generalize the invocation. Incarnation acts for a motion to generalize the prayer. Motion by Councilman Craft. Second by Councilman, Council Vice President Risinger. All those in favor of generalizing the prayer say aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The motion is adopted. We will now proceed with the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the Journal of the Proceedings from the 3:00 PM and 5:00 PM July 17th City Council meetings are on the council member's desk.
Is there a motion to approve the journal? Motion by Councilman Kern, second by Councilwoman Holton. All those in favor of adopting the journal say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion currently in the journal is adopted. The members can find a communication from the mayor on their desk. Bill signed by the mayor can be found on page 2 to 6 of the Agenda, Executive Nominations.
EA 14-0249, Mary H. Tally, Director of Department of Human Resources.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee.
EA 14-0250, Henry J. Raymond, Director of Department of Finance.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee.
EA 14-0251, Anthony W. Batts, Police Commissioner, Baltimore City Police Department.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee. Bills to be introduced.
City Council Bill 14-0422, Sale of Property, 5,000 Gwinok Avenue Ordinance. For the purpose of authorizing the mayor and City Council of Baltimore to sell at either public or private sale, all is interest in certain property known as 5,000 Gwinok Avenue, Block 8308, Lot 001, and no longer needed for public use, and providing a special effective date. Sponsor City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 14-0423, Sale of Property, 720 Pennsylvania Avenue Ordinance. For the purpose of authorizing the mayor and City Council of Baltimore to sell at either public or private sale, all is interest in certain property known as 720 Pennsylvania Avenue, Block 0544, Lot 022, and no longer needed for public use, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 14-0424, Urban Renewal Market Center Amendment Ordinance. For the purpose of amending the urban renewal plan for Market Center to reauthorize the acquisition of properties within the project area, to clarify and correct certain language, to amend Appendix B to add a certain property, to revise an exhibit sheet to reflect the change in the plan, and to extend the life of the plan, waiving certain content and procedural requirements, making the provisions of this ordinance severable, providing for the application of this ordinance in conjunction with certain other ordinances, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Urban Affairs and Agent Committee.
City Council Bill 14-0425, Sale of Properties, Parking Structures, 11 South Utah Street, 22 South Gay Street, 101 South Packer Street, and 210 South St. Paul Place. Ordinance. For the purpose of authorizing the mayor and City Council of Baltimore to sell at either public or private sale, all is interest in certain properties with parking structures known as 11 South Utah Street, Ward 04, Section 10, Block 0655, Lot 008A, 22 South Gay Street, Ward 04, Section 11, Block 1350, Lot 012, 101 South Packer Street, Ward 04, Section 09, Block 0666, Lot 002, and 210 South St. Paul Place, Ward 04, Section 01, Block 0608, Lot 014, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 14-02426, Resoning, 1713 East Pratt Street. Ordinance. For the purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as 1713 East Pratt Street as outlined in red on the accompanying plat from the R8 zoning district to the B22 zoning district. Sponsor Craft.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee. Please note that Councilman Branch wanted to be signed on to rezoning 1713 East Pratt Street. Resolution to be introduced.
City Council Resolution 14-0182R, Racial Disparities in the BWI Thurgood Marshall Airport Concession Program. Resolution for the purpose of supporting the efforts of the Unite Here and the NAACP to address racial disparities and the lack of opportunities for minorities working in the concessions at BWI Thurgood Marshall Airport. Sponsor Clark, Henry, Scott, Kern, Welch, Risinger, Stokes, Branch, and President Young.
Please note that Councilwoman Holton, Councilwoman Specter, and Councilwoman Mosby as co-sponsors. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clark.
Mr. President, members of the council, I'm going to request, if I may, Mr. President, that we have a hearing on this issue. I think it's that important, and that it be assigned to the Labor Subcommittee with your consent. So I'm not asking for immediate adoption, but I am asking for our immediate attention to a situation that should never exist in a BWI airport named after one of the greatest civil rights activists, advocates, and attorneys this nation has ever known, Justice Thurgood Marshall. As Unite Here and the NAACP have learned from their survey and research, African-American employees of the concessions at BWI, excuse me, at the concessions at BWI represent a majority of the workforce for those concessions, but fewer than one-third of that workforce of African-Americans is in a higher-paid job. The majority, the large majority of African-Americans at the airport that work in concessions are in fast food, low wage, and back of the store positions, earning a median wage that is less than the federal poverty level for a family of three. That's not fair, especially in a place named after Thurgood Marshall. And so, this resolution will call upon the state of Maryland, which runs and owns the airport, to work with its vendor, who is in charge of concessions, to correct that situation in which, as I've said, less than a third of African-American workers at the airport have really decent-paying jobs. And secondly, where three out of 40 of the concessions are owned by African-Americans, a pretty small number for such a turnout of our city residents and of African-Americans to support this airport, I might add, four out of every five of the hundreds of workers at concessions at BWI Airport live here in Baltimore City. This is a local justice and economic development issue. I look forward to our hearing after we return in the fall. I look forward to your attention and to your attendance at that time. Thank you.
This has been assigned to the Labor Committee. You can find the Consent Council in Section A at the back of the Agenda. Is there a motion to approve the Consent Council? Motion by Councilman Kern, second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of approving the Consent Council say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion currently of this Council is approved. We'll now move the bills on second reader. Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 14-0374, Plan Unit Development Amendment, Loyola College Athletic Complex Ordinance. For the purpose of approving certain amendments to the development plan of the Loyola College Athletic Complex Plan Unit Development.
Chair recognizes Vice President Risinger.
Mr. President, there's no amendments to this bill. I move the bill favorable.
All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. This motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 14-0320, Acquisition of Property, Baltimore Red Line Transit Project Ordinance. For the purpose of authorizing the mayor and City Council of Baltimore to acquire by purchase or condemnation the fee simple or other interest in certain property or portions of property, together with all right title interest and estate, that the owner or owners of the property have in all streets, alleys, ways, or lanes, public or private, contained within or abutting the whole area, described or contained within the perimeter of the area, being situated in Baltimore City and needed for the Baltimore Red Line Transit Project, and providing for a special effective date.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Council Committee, Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development, heard this bill about two Thursdays ago. There are three amendments. They are on the desk of our colleagues. The first two amendments are technical in nature. The third amendment actually strikes one of the properties from the bill. It's a property that is not needed in the immediacy and may not ever be needed, and so MTA, the city, and all agree that if this particular property is desired sometime in the future, we would bring that back, but at the moment, we're simply striking it. And so, I move the bill as amended favorably.
Second by Councilman Cole. All those in favor of approving the amendment say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. The amendments are adopted. Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
I move the bill favorably.
Second by Councilman Cole. All those in favor of approving this bill say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader. Please note that Councilwoman Clark, you abstain. Please note that Councilwoman Clark abstains. Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the suspend Rule 1011-B to suspend the Hopper Rule and report on Resolution
Second by Council Vice President Risinger. All those in favor of suspended rule say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion currently of the resolution can be reported on. Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development heard this bill last Wednesday.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman. You gotta read it. I'm sorry.
I'm too fast?
I was too fast.
I'm sorry, okay.
Day my anniversary, I'm trying to get out of here.
City Council Bill 14-0176R, informational hearing. Increases to water and wastewater fees and revenue obligations. Resolution. For the purpose of requesting the Department of Public Works and Finance to report to the City Council on the water and wastewater utility fee increases passed in 2013 to take effect in the fiscal years 2015 and 2016, the increases to the maximum aggregate principal revenue obligation, the water and wastewater utilities have requested the City Council approve the by ordinance, the current status of the federal mandates to improve the city's water and wastewater systems, the overall capital improvement plan for the water and wastewater utilities, and to discuss assistance programs available to assist those households that experience financial hardship as a result of these increases.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I move the suspend Rule 1011-B to suspend the Hopper Rule and report on Resolution 14-0176R.
We did that, Councilman.
I know.
You can move the resolution.
I'm sorry. I thought we were reset, hit the reset button. Pardon me. So, I do move City Council Resolution 14-0176R, which was an informational hearing brought to us, the main sponsor being the president, around the issue of increases to water and wastewater fees and revenue obligations. We did hear from the Department of Public Works and Finance around the matters of the effects of the increases to both water and wastewater utility fees, as well as long-term fixes, so to speak, around this issue of repairing infrastructure. So, again, Mr. President, I move the resolution.
Second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of approving this resolution say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. The resolution is adopted. Third reader for final passage.
City Council Bill 13-0270, Resoning Certain Properties New East Baltimore Community. For the purpose of changing the zoning for certain properties in the new East Baltimore community as outlined in green on the accompanying plat from the B32 zoning district to the B23 zoning district as outlined in red on the accompanying plat from the R8 zoning district to the B23 zoning district as outlined in purple on the accompanying plat from the R7 zoning district to the R8 zoning district as outlined in blue on the accompanying plat from the R8 zoning district to the R10 zoning district. President Young, Craft, Scott, Kern, Henry, Specter, Mosby, Holton, Welch, Risinger, Cole, Stokes, Branch, and Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 13-0271, Plan Unit Development Amendment to New East Baltimore Community. For the purpose of repealing Ordinance 11-418, Amendment 1 of the New East Baltimore Community Plan Unit Development, and approving certain amendments to the development plan of the New East Baltimore Community Plan Unit Development. President Young, Craft, Scott, Kern, Henry, Specter, Mosby, Holton, Welch, Risinger, Cole, Stokes, Branch, and Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 14-036... City Council Bill 14-0363, Resoning 1100 East Baltimore Street, 1110 through 1112 East Baltimore Street, 1101 through 1105 East Fayette Street, 1107 through 1133 East Fayette Street, and a portion of East Fairmont Avenue. For the purpose of changing the zoning for the properties known as 1100 East Baltimore Street, 1110 through 1112 East Baltimore Street, 1101 through 1105 East Fayette Street, 1107 through 1133 East Fayette Street, and a portion of East Fairmont Avenue as outlined in red on the accompanying plat from the B33 zoning district to the B24 zoning district. President Young, Craft, Scott, Kern, Henry, Specter, Mosby, Holton, Welch, Risinger, Cole, Stokes, Branch, and Clark.
This bill is approved. Committee announcement. Chair recognizes Councilman Cole.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Executive Appointments Committee will meet on Wednesday, August 27, 2014, at 10:00 AM here in chambers to hear EA 14-0249, Mary Tally, Director of Department of Human Resources; EA 14-0251, Henry J. Raymond, Director of Department of Finance; and EA 14-0252, Anthony W. Batts, Police Commissioner, Baltimore City Police Department. Mr. President, if I might, the reason Commissioner Batts is coming to us is because he is currently serving the expiring term from the former commissioner and needs to be reappointed. So, everybody's asked why he's coming back before us. That's why. 10:00 AM here in chambers on Wednesday, August 27.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I stand to announce a Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Hearing on Bill 14-0420, which is property tax credits for urban agriculture, which will be heard here in chambers on Wednesday, October 1, 2014, 5:00 PM. Thank you, Mr. President.
Chair recognizes Councilman Branch.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Safety Committee will hold a legislative oversight hearing on December, on Tuesday, August 12, 2014, 5:00 at the Burns Chambers. The Public Safety Committee will conduct its quarterly legislative oversight hearing on the Baltimore Police Department plan to combat violence in the city of Baltimore, and I do have a second one, sir. Legislative Oversight Hearing, Tuesday, September 16, 2014, at 4:00 PM in the Burns Chamber. The Public Safety Committee will conduct an informational hearing on the following topics: the anatomy of a car stop and the anatomy of a car tow resulting from a vehicle being stopped by a Baltimore City police officer. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Committee announcement. Chair recognizes Council Vice President Risinger.
Mr. President, the Land Use and Transportation Committee will hold a hearing on Bill 14-0412 on Wednesday, September 10, 2014, at 1:00 PM in the council chambers. This is a rezoning for the purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as 511 South Caroline Street as outlined in red on the accompanying plat from an R8 zoning district to the B12 zoning district. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Housing Community Development Committee will meet in chambers on September 8 at 2:00 PM for a work session on City Council Bill 14-0361, Late Night Commercial Operations, Multiple Businesses. And the committee will also hold a voting session on City Council Bill 14-319, Franchise Baltimore Red Line. This bill was heard on May 1 earlier this year. The voting session will be Wednesday, August 27, at 9:45 AM here in chambers. Thank you.
Committee announcement. Chair recognizes Councilman Craft.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, the Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will hold a hearing on Council Bill 140409 this Wednesday morning, August 13, at 9:00 AM here in the council chambers. This is a corrective bill to the Flood Plane Management Code. I would... I would remind the council members, we will actually hear this and vote on this this on Wednesday morning. This is an amendment we have to make to meet our FEMA qualifications. So this is an important vote that we have to take. So it's at 9:00 AM. At 9:30, we have the work session on the Green Building Code. So I would ask that if you could get here at 9, we'll do that quickly. On Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will hear Council Bill 140173R on Tuesday, August 26, 2014, at 9:30 AM. This is an informational hearing on the new citywide street sweeping plan. It's here in the council chambers. And the Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will hear Council Bill 140415 on Tuesday, September 16, 2014, at 9:00 AM. It's a solid waste management plan for Baltimore City. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any more committee? Okay. I think I'm finished with this. All right, regular announcements. First, I'd like to wish a happy birthday to Councilwoman Holton, whose birthday is August the 18th. And then an early happy birthday to Councilwoman Specter, whose birthday is not until September the 6th. And that's before the next council meeting. So happy birthday to them. I would like to ask for a moment of silence for the sister of Sharon Green Middleton, Sonia Francis. And I'd also like to ask for a moment of silence for the grandmother of Gnesha Martin. She can stand so you know who she is. She lost her grandmother. And we want you to also have a moment of silence for her mom. And you have the rest of them. Before I ask anybody else to speak, this is Councilman Cole's last city council meeting. And I want to wish him well in his new role at BDC and let him know that we're going to be watching you. And let you know that, I mean, you can't get away from us because you still have to come down here and get your stuff done. So I look forward to those conversations as you start your new role. And I know that your focus is on communities just like ours. Our focus has been on communities. So we're looking forward to working with you as you take on your new responsibility. And thank you for the job that you have done since you've been here on the city council of Baltimore. And always know that once you are a member of this body, and as long as I'm president, you're welcome back anytime you like to come back. So. Okay, regular announcement. Chair recognizes Councilman Cole.
Mr. President, thank you very much for those kind words. It has been a true privilege and honor to serve with this family, sometimes a highly dysfunctional family, but no different than any other family. This is, you know, I don't have any siblings. And this body reminds me of the brothers and sisters I never wanted. But I have truly, truly enjoyed working with you. I've known many of you since I was a kid, quite literally. I was in my early twenties, working for Congressman Cummings when I met most of you. And it has been one heck of an opportunity, serving with you here. You know, my wife and kids never watch these hearings, ever. I think my kids have been here maybe twice. They never saw it as any big deal. And I appreciate that because this is really work that is important to lots of people. We're no different than anybody else, and I've never seen it that way. And I appreciate that of all of you. Betsy Ziegler, who has been with me since I was in the legislature and well beyond that. Betsy, thank you. And Justin Lane, stand up, please. Mr. President, you and I go back a long way. And you have been a friend of mine. And while we aren't always on the same side of an issue, we have always remained friends. And that's important. And I think it's a testament to all of you that we can be disagreeable and we can disagree on issues, but we can walk away at the end of the day with a common purpose, and that is making this city better. And I really look forward to the challenges ahead. I said to one of the media publications today that I feel like Baltimore is sitting on the launching pad. We are absolutely ready to take off. You all have been pushing the ball along the way. I'm just going across the street to do my part, but I will be back here. I know I will be back here to defend my budget. But I will be back here. And I really, really, really look forward to working with you all in this next phase of my public service. So thank you.
Oh, before anybody else, I want to wish my wife a happy 35th anniversary. We're celebrating 35 years a day. And I'm headed to a restaurant, so y'all be a little, you know, considerate. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Specter.
First of all, I want to wish Darlene a happy birthday. You know, I feel a little bit of a mixed emotion about losing Bill. He's right. In America, any family with more than one member is a dysfunctional family. It's true. That part is true. But one of the comforting things for me is that we have somebody that's been on the ground with us, understands that where we are and how we're going to get where we want to be. And I pledge my support to help you because that's what we're all here for, whether your kids know it or not. That's what we're here for, to work for them, to make this a better place to live and work. And I'm really very happy that they may have made this choice. And I think the responsibility that we have to each other is even greater than being a colleague in the council. We have to make sure your success is our success. And we're there to help you.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I stand to bid my seatmate a short adieu. I noticed that when the councilman turned my way when he said, "We may disagree," and then he turned back to everybody else.
He got to come through your committee.
Right. We'll see him soon. Now, but I got to tell you, I knew him before I knew him because I knew his daddy. And I say this often to my colleague. His daddy was one of the most honorable business people I know, one of the most honorable persons I know. And I mean that sincerely. I knew Bill Cole, Sr., and just a great guy. I've gotten to know his mom, who was working and helping St. Ambrose and other nonprofits in the city. So he's come from great stock. So there's hope for him yet. And of course, we went to the same high school, a generation apart. He says 30 years, it's more like 20 years. But be that as it might, I've asked every Loyola High graduate I know to move into the 11th district because we have to keep the gang of five intact. But thanks, brother. We appreciate you so much. God bless.
Chair recognizes Councilman Scott. He was next.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, before I talk about our departing colleague, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for both Devin Cook and Mackenzie Elliott, the two young people that we lost recently. But, so I thought that was important for us to do. But also to our departing colleague, my friend Bill Cole, I would like to say that you have single-handedly increased the median age of the Baltimore City Council, sir. We're not going to say what is departed, going back to, but thank you for that. Councilman Henry is writing another note for me. But you're a great friend to us. We know that you're going to do great at BDC because we know that we'll make you do great. But as long as from my end, just know that in northeast Baltimore, Bellet Road is Bellet and Harford Road, despite what Uncle Bobby tells you, you'll be quite all right, sir. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Councilman Craft.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I go to my colleague from the 11th, I also have a moment of silence. Katie Golden, who works in my office, her mom passed away on Saturday, Jenny Golden. So I would ask that we would keep her in our prayers. Katie just started with us a couple of months ago, but she lost her mom on Saturday, Jenny Golden. Second thing I'd like to talk about for just a minute or two before we get to my colleague is the letter from the mayor. Now, last week, or our last meeting, we passed a charter amendment to send to the voters of the city of Baltimore for them to make a decision about whether or not the council should have certain powers. Now, you know, we have people that complain all the time about property taxes and water bills and everything else. A lot of that stuff, we really have no control over. But there are those nitpicky little things all the time about, you know, whether someone should have to pay to have an ADA ramp out in front of their building, or whether they should have to pay to put a bike rack out in front of their building, or whether they should have to pay to have a flower pot in front of their building, or if they want to put an awning up, whether they should be charged a dollar a square foot for that, and whether someone should be able to do something about it. And right now, that's done by the Board of Estimates. And very frankly, they haven't done a very good job at paying attention to it until we really, until we drew their attention to it. And we're, in the veto message, it says, you know, the DGS is working on that, and they're going to be coming up with some, you know, removing these fees on certain things. You know, that's fine, but we've been told that was going to happen for some time. The interesting thing is that this bill that got vetoed, the first veto that the mayor has made, is not a bill that gives us any power. It's not even a law. All it is, is something that sends something to the voters of the city of Baltimore and says, "Hey, you, ladies and gentlemen, the city of Baltimore, decide whether you want your city council to have the power to determine whether or not you get charged for having a flower pot in front of your ass." That's all it is. And we have the administration saying, "We don't want the voters of the city of Baltimore to make that decision." You know, it's just, it's silly. But it was made. Anyhow, those are my remarks about the veto. Lots of important things to be done in this city, and we're wasting a veto on whether or not to let the citizens decide whether to, whether we can charge for a flower pot. Now, speaking of flower pots and awnings and bike racks, there's a gentleman now that we're going to talk about who's going to be responsible for getting us a lot of awnings and bike racks and flower pots, and not just in Harbor East, and not just in Harbor Point, and not just in downtown, but in every main street around the whole city of Baltimore. And I don't know anybody that can do it better than Bill Cole. You know, I mean, the mayor and I have gone around and around on appointments. I haven't been happy about very many of them, but I think she gets five extra ones for this one. Really, this, I said to, I sent Bill an email over the weekend, and I said, you know, that there are some people that will go so far as to quit their job rather than have to vote for Styrofoam ban. There he is. But there is good news about this, ladies and gentlemen. And my colleague from the 12th district beat me to it, but we will have one less Don on the council, you know? And there wasn't any way to get us down from five to four. That is the Loyola guys, you know? We're getting there. We got one Polly guy, we got one Saint Joe guy. Now we're down from five to four Loyola guys. We're working on it. And that is my first qualification for the replacement. Mr. President cannot have graduated from Loyola. Good luck, Bill. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Holton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to say to Bill, I wish you much success as we have served together in the past on Taxation and Finance Committee, as well as the Budget Committee, and that it is my hope that we will really begin to focus on economic development opportunities outside of downtown, on the outer rings of the city, where there are economic development opportunities to be had to support the many communities across the city that want to have and feel a sense that the city does care about more than just downtown and the inner harbor. So I wish you all the best. Thank you.
Council Vice President Ross Singer. Then Councilwoman Clark, then Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilman Cole, you will be missed. I mean, one thing I can say, that you can separate personal from business, we could agree to disagree. And I'm also, Mr. President, is I'm glad that he sat on the council, he sat on the budget, because when we cut BDC's budget, he'll understand.
Chair recognizes, who was it? Councilwoman Clark. I didn't want to cut their budget because, you know, I'm a Main Street guy.
Amen.
That's why I ain't laughing.
If I may, Mr. President, members of the council, before I bid farewell to our colleague, I have, I would like to talk about two persons who have died and passed on to this past week. One is Mackenzie Elliott, a little three-year-old girl who lives, who lived on Old York Road and was just on her own front porch at 4:00 in the afternoon. There's nothing that can be said to express the way the entire community and city feels about this outrage and how we all hope and pray that her family gets through this with the help of us and with the help of the Lord, and that somehow, some way, this time in this tragedy, we may change our ways here in this city so that children can play within an arm's length of their mother on their own front porch and know that they're safe in the heart of Baltimore. And then there's a wonderful man who passed at the age of 101. And I'm honored to talk about him, although my colleague from, what district are you? The 10th district, maybe knew him longer, maybe knew him weller. But he let me talk about Elmer Peck Jones. When I was president of the city council, and before I got here, and maybe after I left, he was the chief clerk of the council. He's, Peck Jones served for 27 of his 101 years in this chamber. And proudly, he did a person of the old school and a gentleman from head to toe. And he knew everything about everybody in the neighborhoods he came out of and in the neighborhoods where, as Bill reminded me earlier, as a child, he ran out to the tracks to catch the coal as the trains went by so he could heat his home. He came out of hard times, but he brought great joy wherever he went and will be remembered by all of us who served with him and knew him well. Judge Tim Murphy called me yesterday to tell me that Peck had passed. And he said, "The last time he talked to Peck on the phone, Mr. Jones said it was on his 100th birthday." And Mr. Jones said, "You know, Tim, I can't really hear you very well, but I think you're calling to wish me happy birthday," because Judge Murphy called him every year to wish him happy birthday. And he said, "And I'm not really feeling too well right now, and the problem is, I don't know anybody else that's 100 years old that I can call up and find out what's wrong with me." And so there wasn't very much ever wrong with Peck Jones. But he died, he passed, and he will be long remembered and loved by hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people for whom he made such positive difference and brought such joy and service and love of Baltimore City. And then finally, a farewell to Bill Cole. I don't know if we've ever voted the same way on a bill. All right, and you did Source of Income, and that was lately. But really, that's not the issue. The issue is, I am so proud of Bill Cole, Councilman Cole, for being appointed to this job. I'm so proud of how well we raised him up to prepare him for this, for this role. And then, yeah, raised him up, beat him up, knocked him around the head, and basically, there's nothing they can do out there when you take on this job that hasn't been done, that you haven't survived. that you haven't survived. You've survived us. And what I love is that Councilman Cole is a devoted, diligent councilperson. He knows what matters. And he knows from his own district, yes, downtown, around the harbor, in the business centers, we must thrive. But that we're thriving because of the people in the outlying districts of the neighborhoods, of the main streets of Baltimore. And I heard him say it in the newspaper, the main streets, and I know he knows why they're important. It's not just words, it's experience with Federal Hill, Locust Point, all, North Avenue, all those centers of economic development and for the neighborhoods of the communities. So I know he'll be, have one foot in each world because he has for the past two terms, and he'll know what to do when he gets there. And if he forgets, we'll say, "Bill, if you could step right over here to Greenmount Avenue, I'd like to have a few words." So congratulations, Godspeed, and tell your mother she did good.
Chair recognizes Councilman Branch. Then Councilman, y'all remember, the night is my thirty-fifth wedding anniversary, and I don't want to be late picking up my wife.
Mr. President, I better make it short. I want to first extend my condolences to the family of Lawrence Summons. He was an employee that worked for housing that passed in the thirteenth district, and if he could be added also to the list, Lawrence Summons. And I do want to, I want to first of all, thank the board of BDC for selecting, I was so grateful to hear Bill's name because usually we're going outside of the city of Baltimore to find someone, and they selected someone from right here within this body, not only within this body, who knows the city, knows the economics of Baltimore City. So I congratulate him and for him and his family, my praises. Thank you, sir.
Chair recognizes Councilman Welch.
Thank you, Mr. President. Highly analytical, well organized, some of the qualities that you get at Loyola High School, Loyola education, a fellow Don. And it's not just an opportunity for you, but it's an opportunity for us because you have a love for both community and business. And it's our opportunity to bring that type of development to our neighborhoods. So thankful for what you've done, and we look forward to what you're going to do.
Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I need to also ask for a moment of silence. Last month, we lost Nelson Carey, who's the proprietor of Grand Crew Wine Bar in Belvedere Square. He will be, he was greatly loved, and he will be greatly missed. Second, on behalf of my seatmates to either side of me and myself, we wish you to be on the record as having taken no part in raising Councilman Cole. Third, I want my colleague from the eleventh to understand that our colleague, Councilman Welch, wanted to do a resolution for you. And we were pretty sure that we could get you floor privileges. But we convinced him that, given your proclivities, it would be more appropriate to send a letter. And so, in fact, I will forego a lengthy speech as to how much I will miss one of my colleagues who actually gets my jokes, and instead pass the microphone along to another of our body. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Councilman Mosby.
Thank you, Mr. President. Congratulations on your anniversary. I'll be real quick. Bill, you've been blessed with an amazing amount of intellect, aptitude, passion for the city of Baltimore. And when you move on to the BDC, I ask that you utilize the experiences that you've taken from this body, specifically serving some of parts of Baltimore who have not seen economic development in quite some time, like Harlem Park and West Baltimore and Pennsylvania Avenue. And you leverage that to be the items that keep you up at night, the items that you force and push the folks that you decide to bring with you over the BDC to come up with creative and innovative ways. You know, when I look at the city of Baltimore and I see where we can go and the trajectory that we could be in, we understand and know that the BDC is a huge variable in that. And now you get to put your fingerprints on that. So I ask that you stay true to your foundation, I know you will, and understand and knowing that the BDC is there to serve all of the city and ensure that you will do your best and your strongest and your most fearful job in ensuring that we get economic development throughout the entire city. So congratulations, this is an awesome opportunity for you.
Chair recognizes Councilman Kern.
Being the co-senior man, co-senior representative of Loyola High with my good friend that's behind you there, I probably have one of the last words to say tonight. I was quoted the other day in the Sun paper, I said, "There's no better choice for BDC president." And that's, that's the easy part. The hard part of that, what I said to the Sun paper, was that I'm truly losing a political relationship. Mr. President, it's all about relationships and politics or legislative bodies.
You don't have the more close friends on this council. He's gone.
Or neighbors. It's all about relationships. And I guarantee you, Mr. President, I had no closer political relationship than I had with William Cole the fourth over the years that he served here, and even down in Annapolis when we had, we have some mutual friends on the second floor here, and the second floor in Annapolis. But I've had no better political relationship than anyone counseled each other a lot of times. And I'm truly going to miss you. I'm not going to be like Betsy back there, might have a little bit more of a teary eye than I do. But it's truly about relationships, Mr. President. And I'm ready to sit with the Councilman Cole over these years, has been second to none, and I stand by that. But that being said, I know that the BDC has to come with resolutions for the enterprise zone in the future. And I know that goes to the Taxation Committee, and we'll be looking forward to that. And I know that the gentleman from the eleventh district, the new president of BDC, he's known my interest in Lot J and the other property down there on Stockholm Street. And I know that hopefully that we can get that resolved. But Bill, it's been a real honor and a pleasure to work with you over these years through election processes and in the city council, and I'm truly be missed. Thank you.
You say anything yet? Oh. Chair recognizes Council Vice President Rossinger.
Mr. President, members of the council, the next meeting of the city council will be held on Monday, September the eighth, at five PM in the council chambers. And I ask a moment of silence, Mr. President, for Mackenzie Elliott, Sonia White Francis, Peck Jones, Nelson Carey, Lawrence Summons, and Virginia Golden.
And also, the grandmother of Ganesha Martin. There be no further business. This concludes the sixty-eighth meeting of the seventy-first term of the Baltimore City Council. Good night.